Okay, the time is five o'clock. Call to the order, the regular meeting, the Chisholm School Board and Chisholm District, six ninety-five. Lisa, do you roll call, please?
Director Sauter?
Here.
Director Rice?
Here.
Director Kadi Sauter?
Here.
Director Raha?
Here.
The board chair, Casey.
Here. Anybody wish to participate in public comments? As we recognize our guests and visitors, you know, Alex Kazar here. Our business manager at the moment. Representatives from the teachers group, anything? Okay. Item four will approve the agenda. I would like to add item O. If you look in your package, Mr. Fergine is asking for a working session at some point. So we'll put that as item O. Working session. With the building supervisor. Anybody here for reports? Alex or Ebony want to wait for the agenda?
Yeah, I kind of summarized my item, but we definitely touched on it. We didn't too much.
Okay.
Just a couple of things I'll mention, too. So the agenda that wants to present to the board in July at some point, I see we were planning on July twenty-fourth, but I see in the agenda, we're going to change that date. So I'll talk to them. They just want to take about a half hour on a night of a meeting before or after and present about thirty minutes and then fifteen minutes of questions. We'll be doing principal interviews a week from tomorrow here at the school. And hopefully we come out of there with recommendations for the board. And then the last thing you mentioned, Mike, where he wants to meet, and that's concerning some buses and just looking at what is financially the best option as far as moving forward with getting a bus or leasing or repairing the one that we have. So just really aware of that.
Okay. Any others? Item six, approve the consent agenda. These items include minutes of the-
Mark, you approve the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you change?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with adding O. I'll second that.
Apologies. Now we'll approve the consent agenda. These include the minutes of the May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting, payrolls for the month of May two thousand twenty-three in the amount of six hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and one cent. And accounts payable for the month of May two thousand twenty-three in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and four cents. Can I get a motion?
So, okay. Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item seven is our personnel. Item E is the motion to accept the resignation of Katrina Swalby as drama club advisor and one act clay coach effective June first, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion approval.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Motion by Director Raha, second by Director Randy Sauter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item B is the motion to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Jim Knee, elementary teacher, effective October first, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I get a motion to accept that resignation?
I'll motion approval with many thanks. He's served the district for many years in many capacities and I appreciate him.
I'll second.
Motion by Director Raha, second by Director Roddy Simon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Moving on to administrative business, agenda item eight, A. We have before you a motion to adopt the resolution approving remote work arrangements for the outgoing superintendent as presented. This is resolution twenty-three dash zero six twelve, again approving remote work arrangement for outgoing superintendent. Can I entertain a motion to accept?
Okay.
Support?
Support.
And Lisa, can I get a roll call?
Director Sauter?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Kadi Sauter?
Yes.
Raha?
Yes.
Or Chair Casey?
Yes. Motion carries. Item B, motion to approve Mark Morrison to act as the identified official with authority for six ninety-five dash one to authorize review and rectify users for the education identity access management EDM system. This is also a resolution.
Make a motion.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this a resolution?
I thought it was. No, I guess that was wrong.
It says on top of it, I don't know if you can get it.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Moving right along. Item C, motion to adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget as presented. Alex, do you want to say?
Chair.
Everyone's had a chance to see the email.
Thank you, Alex.
So I'm here mostly to answer some questions you might have, but like I said, there was some major funding initiatives at the very end that kind of came in and saved the day. And like I explained, I think this is a conservative budget still. We're still trying to figure out the health insurance. We may even have a decrease with the health insurance. That's not built in here, so there's a little cushion there, hopefully, probably. So again, yeah, really, after several years of gridlock and nothing happened, a lot happened this year from the state level, so.
Ebony, do you have anything to add at this point? Directors?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. The process of sitting for special aid. They didn't fund the whole thing, but they gave us-
Correct, yeah. So this has been a complaint, I guess, of the school districts for many years that you have these mandates that are unfunded. This year, the legislature finally decided they were going to do something with it. Well, they're not one hundred percent funding. It's about forty-four percent, I believe, so.
That's still better than just zero.
So I'm glad, and I believe for us, the amount to like three hundred and almost forty thousand dollars.
Wow.
Yeah, and that's only forty percent.
That's huge.
And I got one question about the COVID money.
Right.
Are they going to come in and take anything you have away? I mean, that's kind of the way I was reading it, like-
Yeah, so, you know, with the whole debt ceiling standoff, there was a proposal to claw back the sun spent on it. But I understand that would be money that's sitting in federal coffers that hasn't been allocated.
Okay.
In this case, it's allocated to the school district. I could go in there, or we could go in there right now and actually draw it out, and maybe that's strategy, keep it in our bank under your comment.
Or you can actually do that, put it, yeah.
Yeah.
Then what is the downside to that?
Yeah, what's the downside?
Yeah.
There's no downside other than you just have to, there's an approval process.
Okay.
And certain expenditures, certain types of expenditures. So we'd have to get the state's blessing.
Okay.
But otherwise, we do have access to it. And as long as you brought that up, a couple of weeks ago when I did the preliminary talk with you, I was, we had planned to draw about seven hundred and fifty thousand of that. Now that's about just half a million as a result of this additional funding. So that's money that, you know, we'd have to spend by the end of next school year. So whether it's on operations or some special project.
I guess my question would be if that was the case where you could draw the money from it and put it somewhere, wouldn't it still have to be allocated for certain things? It would still have to follow that?
Right. But if we could get it approved where we're just paying our general ed salaries, we could potentially draw and keep it in our bank instead of-
Right.
Instead of states.
Very good. I've been just wondering.
Yeah. Something we can definitely look at further down. I know Chair Casey mentioned that, looking at maybe restarting the finance committee, meeting more regularly, maybe quarterly as a committee.
Oh, yeah, because we used to meet, what did we meet, every other month or every third or?
You know, Simone used to make sure we always met. She would do that, right, like during a board meeting?
Yeah, like before, like, yeah.
Yeah, and then she would go over the numbers and things like that, but, yeah.
I know the budget committee, I know that we always met at least.
I thought it was always monthly, every other month or something.
Yeah, unless it was like, you know, a little bit slowed down, then she'd say, well, I don't think, there's not much change, so let's just do it next month. But, yeah, we always met. She's the one who taught me a lot of both stuff. At those little meetings, you were able to really understand and try to get, you know, handle on it, because obviously we all know school finances.
Well, I just, I just thought it would be, one, to my benefit, I don't know about the rest of the board is to get a better understanding of that, me, Alex are doing and who's in deficits and who's not, our departments.
Yeah.
When I say who, I mean departments.
Yeah.
And that might be, the following year, we could make those adjustments. Or as Alex was saying, the extra dollars that might be available may be able to allocate or offset some of those departments, so.
I think that's a good idea.
Plus, it'll be a nice learning thing for Ebony, too. I mean, everybody, you know, I, I think that it would be a good thing all around.
Any other questions for Ebony or Alex?
Thank you.
That said, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-four budget as presented.
I'll motion.
I'll support it.
You opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, motion to approve the contract with Arrowhead Regional Consulting or Regional Computing. And this is a third contract with Arc.
I'll make a motion.
I'll support.
Director Kadi Simon, supported by Director Raha. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item E, motion to appoint squires Walzberger and Mace as an additional school district legal counsel. This is-
This, this is just, there's no cost to this. This is just in case we need a second opinion on something. So if there's no cost, it's just additional counsel in case we run into a situation where we or I would want a second opinion on something, so we still use the classroom.
Primarily.
Primarily.
Yeah, and this is not uncommon.
No, sometimes they have conflicts, a local, you know, a local law, they represent, you know, multiple districts, which classroom does, so it's not, it's not bad to have a second, a second person that you've already kind of at least have that contact with, so.
Yeah.
No, I would agree. Not uncommon.
Entertained motion to appoint squires Walzberger and Mace as additional school district legal counsel.
Also, I'll second that.
Director Rice. Supported by Director Raha. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item F, motion to approve the property and liability insurance with Valer in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and six thousand, seventy-eight cents, effective July first, two thousand twenty-three to June first, two thousand and twenty-four. And I believe if you'll recall, we had another entity come in here and give the presentation to us.
Yeah, I did never move that. Yeah, you probably could speak to this better than me.
Here's what, here's all this work, and I didn't notice it. But there's only, there's only a handful of carrier, you know, companies that will cover schools. So Valor got the information first, and they went out to Liberty Handover and I think it's EMC, something like that. So once we have a quote from those companies through one agent, they won't give the quote to the same company through another agent. So what we would have to do is-
Tell them no.
Tell Valor that we're going to go a different direction. And I don't know, I mean, that's something to look at, but-
We just maybe have to be a little bit more prepared. I think when all that happened, everything happened at one time, too. There was so much going on.
And just for the record, Valor's been a very good partner to the district for many years, with no issue. Customer service is fantastic. So-
And that means a lot. That means a lot.
Well, they keep the thing, and there's a slight increase this year, but considering what's-
Yeah.
What you've heard, you know, about-
A three percent increase is, we're satisfied with that.
Yes, very happy with that.
David told me-
He said we don't live in Florida.
Right.
Yeah. He came and met with me last week or a couple of weeks ago, and he said they're just, it's getting harder and harder to get companies to cover schools.
Yeah, you know.
It's old buildings, you're underfunded, and, yeah, so.
Well, maybe it'll be easier when we have a new school.
I hear the rates go down.
Okay. I see what happens to car.
But I guess, I guess I will, did he mention anything? If the rates would go down once our new facility is built?
I guess we didn't have that conversation, but that'd be interesting.
And I know there's a lot of variables that go into there.
On the other hand, you have a building that has a, you know, whole different replacement cost and, you know, I'm sure there's formulas and-
Yeah.
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 Even if they don't go up, I would call it a-
A win.
Entertained motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll support it.
Motion by Director Randy Sauter, supported by Director Kadi?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item G, motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four resolution for membership in Minnesota State High School League as presented. This is just a membership renewal form for the State High School League. Comes before you, I believe, every year.
Yeah, it does.
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
I'll support.
Motion by Director Kadi Simon, supported by Director Raha. And this is a resolution, so it does require a roll call.
Director Sauter?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Kadi Sauter?
Yes.
Director Raha?
Yes.
The board chair, Casey.
Yes. Motion carries. Motion to approve the membership to the Minnesota School Board Associations and Policy Services renewal for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and authorize the superintendent to pay dues in the amount of six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Make a motion.
I'll support it.
Motion by Director Kadi Simon, supported by Director Randy Sauter. This is not a resolution, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item I, motion to approve the letter of understanding between the Chisholm School District and Assme adding Juneteenth to the list of holidays found in Article eleven of the collecting, collective bargaining agreement. As we all know, that Juneteenth is a new holiday passed by Minnesota State Legislature, and school districts are in observance of that. Just a little background, I guess it's for the emancipation of slavery. Back in the eighteen-sixties, and Texas was the first state to approve this. So we are looking for a motion for the letter of understanding. Before I get, before I get to that, does any of the representatives from?
I don't think so.
Nope.
They're not here.
Okay, again, just a misunderstanding, everybody's read it, he thought he could carry over his compensatory days.
Wait, that's the next one.
Yeah, we're gonna finish the first, the under, the first. I'll make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself.
You are. I make a motion on the first letter of understanding.
I support.
Motion by Roddy Simon, thank you. Second by Randy Sauter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
There was two.
The sun is getting to me, I guess. Now we are on to the J. Motion to approve the letter of understanding between the Chisholm School District and Assme regarding the use of this very time.
Yes.
During the month of July.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kadi Simon.
I'll support.
Second by Director Rice. This is a resolution, so it does require a roll call.
I don't think it is. No, no, no.
It's not. Whereas anytime I see where it says whereas, 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 I consider that a resolution.
Kind of looks like it, but what does seem to be further resolved, but we didn't do it on the other one. Go back track to I do a roll of that, we can do it, too.
I don't think our letters of understanding, I don't think-
I think it's just the format that we're using.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, adopt the resolution to accept Owens charitable foundation donation to support the all scholarship fund. This is resolution twenty-three dash zero six dash twelve point one. Again, we thank those members of the Owens Foundation, and I believe Jen Bymark, Jack Ryan, Todd Skaya, and they do spread their money around quite a bit, and we appreciate that. And we appreciate their services to the school district and to the Chisholm. So with that said.
Make a motion.
And I'll support it.
Motion by Kadi Simon, second by Director Rice. Again, this is a resolution, so we'll go for a roll call.
Oh, yeah.
I'm getting it.
Yes.
Yes.
Director Kadi Simon?
Yes.
Director Raha?
Yes.
Or Chair Casey?
Yes. Motion carries. And then we thank, again, we thank the Owens Foundation. Item L, motion to approve the amended two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school calendar as presented. This does include the holiday of Juneteenth. And just a note for the board and those educators that are present. The Christmas holiday is much less as it was last year. So I will entertain a motion for the new calendar schedule.
So.
Support.
All right, Simon, by Raha. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, motion to approve the resolution to accept donations, this is resolution twenty-three dash zero six dash twelve. Six hundred dollars from the Amets for the CF Toys Equipment and Pizza Party. Two hundred and fifty dollars from the Family and Friends of Sheila Knee for the sock hop. Two hundred dollars from the American Legion for Student Council Nationals. Forty dollars from Jim's Sports Club for the all-night grad party. Fifty dollars from the Cherry Greenhouse for the all-night grad party. One thousand dollars from Dr. Ben Owens Fund for the new wrestling mats for Chisholm Elementary. Five thousand from the Chisholm Community Foundation for new football, baseball, and softball helmets. Five hundred dollars from Alpha Delta Kappa Pi Chapter for lab equipment. Twenty-five hundred dollars from the Chisholm Community Foundation for Fitness Center updates. One thousand and forty-one dollars for the Check and Connect Summer Program. Three thousand and thirty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents from the Chisholm Community Foundation for the Catherine Cox Fund. And two hundred dollars from the Chisholm Women's Volleyball League for the two thousand twenty-three volleyball scholarship. Identical motion?
I'll motion approval.
I'll support it.
Motion by Director Raha, second by Director Kadi Simon.
Director Sauter?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Kadi Sauter?
Yes.
Director Raha?
Yeah.
Or Chair Casey?
Yes. Motion carries. Item N, motion to move the July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting to July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. As prior to the meeting, I was talking to this superintendent Morrison. July twenty-fourth is the Chisholm Community Foundation golf outing, their major fundraiser of the year. I will be in attendance for that. And as our past resolution, as you can see, we do give quite a, quite a bit to school. And I think Director Rice has been an integral part of the CCF Foundation.
That's my last thing. I'm off after the hell on you.
If there's any comments or concerns, questions?
I think if there are conflict on Tuesday, but one person was in it, you know, on Tuesday.
Okay, because you had the other-
I had the other meeting, but that happens a couple of times a year, on Tuesday, so.
Like to entertain a motion?
I'll motion approval.
Motion by Director Raha, second?
Support.
Our support by Director Rice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Our last item of business is item O, we just add, added. Mr. Fergine is asking to sit down with the board in a working session to discuss some of the issues that are maintenance and he had been, excuse me, dealing with steam leak in the tunnel. They did a smoke test last week, I believe it was, and we have some issues there. Talking to AR high to see if used lockers would work in their design and annual summer maintenance. One of the issues also, I was at the smoke test, is that in between the old school and the present new school, the sanitary sewer would have to be rerouted somehow. Can't build over sanitary sewer. So that's probably one of the issues that Mr. Fergine is also going to mention to us. One of the suggestions was to route it closer to the old building and make the type of the- Make the type of walkway or causeway to the, to the new facility, but they wouldn't be able to get enough drop in the sewer. Sewer line to make that work. But we'll, we'll hear from Mr. Purdean and probably some of the engineers that are involved. That is a major issue that we're gonna run into. The first, I'm sure, of many. And he was asking for. Working session for June twentieth or twenty-third.
June twentieth is.
It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
And that's all made comes from eight in the morning till whenever, right? Is that?
What's?
That postponed?
Oh, yeah, yep, that's right.
Wednesday.
Would this unit be better served? Couple of you. Or chair, myself and him, and maybe bring in recommendations if we can't find a way, unless we can get together every different day of that week.
I'll let, I'll let the board.
Is it June twentieth through the twenty-third?
I think he was looking for that.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, for holidays. Yep. I'm not in the area on the twenty-third. But I could do twenty-first or twenty-second.
I'm with Danielle. Twenty-first or twenty-second works for me.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first would work for me. Is the board Superintendent Morrison was.
Can we do afternoon? You need afternoon to, though, Jackie, okay?
Typically, but I'm also not opposed to a small group either, if that's easier to get together.
Yep. Because I do any term under two, actually.
I guess I would like either approval from the board to just have Superintendent Morrison, board chair, or representative of the board in attendance at that meeting.
Maybe you and one more person, but I mean. That would work.
Any volunteers?
I would. I'm available.
Thank you, Director Raha. So at that point, the twenty-second, I am not available unless it's in the morning. So, and Mr. Raha, you said your twenty-first, you're going to.
I'm good.
You're going on the twenty-first?
I'm going on the twenty-first.
Okay, let's figure out a time. Because the time is up, yes, especially with the bus and stuff. We need to get this moving on this.
Okay.
Obviously, someone gets for everybody.
Every morning is planned. Time is up, yes.
Does. I'm leaving the twenty-first, we're out of state, but I'm here most of the day, so.
Meeting at five o'clock?
Are we, you're just doing a small meeting or a whole school board working session?
Small.
Small meeting, okay.
That said, I don't think we need a motion for that.
At what time you guys are meeting? Oh, you were being smart.
Smart. At one time this meeting that I'd be the smart.
Okay.
All right, of course.
Superintendent Morrison will get a hold of Mr. Purdean and get time for us. Item number nine for discussion. I, I do have one item. And I have talked about this in the past with the, with the outcome superintendent and Mr. Raha, and I think I've talked with Director Rice. And I think I've talked with everybody at various times. I feel so that it's, it's good to have a board member involved in interviews that have. Administrative purposes. I'm not talking about teachers, bus drivers, maintenance. I'm talking, just to use example, business manager, principal. Obviously superintendent, and maybe facilities, facilities in round. Just, and again, I'm, I'm just looking for feedback.
Oh, I, I'm fully.
I disagree completely. We used to have a personnel committee, we no longer do. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, the staff that works in this school, the teachers and stuff. They can interview the principal candidates, and their questions are good, and they're the ones who have to work with these people. The board does not work with the principals. The board works with superintendent. So I disagree with having board members involved. I, I just do, but.
It's not like the problem. I think it's fine. I mean, I think having someone on there, the committee.
Well, and I think that it's not like the board person is gonna have a lot, we're not gonna sit and interview them at all. You sit and, like I came to the interviews for the payroll person, and I, I wasn't part of the interview, but I was there taking notes just to be there, so we kind of know what is going on. Just that.
They at least have face twenty, they have a little familiarity with, you know, with the candidates, so.
But if we're not, if we're not interviewing, I'm okay. If you sit on the sideline and listen, that's fine.
Yeah.
But.
That's kind of. That's probably what we're doing.
That's kind of what I'm going at.
Okay.
That's exactly, and that's exactly what I did. I mean, I talked once, I didn't ask any question.
Yeah, and you know, in my, over the years, just in, you know, being around, it's, it's a little bit different. I think a lot of it depends on the size of the school. The bigger schools aren't including. Board members on principal interviews. The small schools almost always are. Part of that is just there's fewer people, and there's just more involvement, you know, you're not gonna see Minneapolis schools, school board members interview teachers or anything like that. And a lot, even here, the superintendents in the past typically have not even sat on teacher interviews, they have the principals and the, maybe the department, people within the department. We have a special at opening, we'll usually have a special at teaching on the interview, so. It's, depends on what district. Every district's a little bit different, but most small schools do have a school board member or two on principal interviews. Or other administrative positions. I have no opinion either way on it.
Yeah, at our, at our previous meeting, I think, I think that I talked to previous superintendent, Beluzo and Vercheck, and they have. They were a little different. Superintendent Beluzo said that a board person was involved in just the administrative. Interviews. And Director, or former superintendent Vercheck stated that they had a board member involved and as far down as the teachers. Now, I can attest to that. Maybe Director Raha can, but I, again, I'm not saying being, sit in on a teacher interviews. Four positions maybe.
Well, I think if you wanna sit and take notes and stuff like that, because I think administration and, and the teaching staff know the questions to ask.
Yes.
They do.
And that's all I'm asking. So we don't, observation, and, uh.
So when we're hiring a superintendent, you have a list of questions, and we can all ask that, and that's, that's what our role is, but. Sitting on the sideline and listening, yeah, I'm with that. I'm good for that.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any items for discussion?
Oh, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest, and I don't know what Superintendent Marvin's position or like schedule looks like, but. Maybe scheduling like a, like a coffee end or a coffee and cake or a lunch or something, or if it's something smaller, just towards the end of the month if he's available, just something to. You know, just commiserate the, you know, his retirement and.
If we can get him off the beach.
Yeah, right. I was like, he might have things planned, and I was like, I don't know if we do, you know, if we just do a, you know, a lunch at Valentine's or something, nothing like. You know, ridiculous, just something just, you know. Help just to say thanks for, you know, thanks for your hard work and have your.
Those that can make it, make it.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I didn't want to make anything like, so that people. Have to be real complicated, but maybe just something casual. He might be uncomfortable, something.
We might not even know.
Yeah, weird, or like, you know, just but. At least an invitation to someone.
Let's assign Superintendent Morrison to that task.
See if he's not available.
Okay. Yeah.
If he prefers like a lingerie, he wants to just. Coffee and donuts or something, whatever, something just.
Easy.
Mm-hmm, so easy, that's what I was thinking too. I'm not a good party planner. Not my job, Jay. Stay in your lane.
You know, I'll take.
I just, I just, I just. Yeah, there you go. I just.
Anybody, any others who must have anything else for discussion? Item ten, enrollment numbers. And I wish. I wish at least one of the. I shouldn't say one of the principals, we only have one right now.
No, usually it's pretty typical, we drop, high school, we typically, over the course of the year, we typically drop twenty, thirty kids from high school up. From the small, we usually start high in the fall, and slowly kids. The elementary stays pretty consistent, and I don't know if it's gonna happen, but it looks like.
Actually, twelve did as well, I should have.
Yeah.
And it looks like we have some higher numbers coming up, at least for.
Eighth grade.
The four seals, which is nice to see. We had pre-registrations in kindergarten that were up, way up, actually. Ms. Rice, would you like to?
I don't remember. Forty-six was the last number I administered, and three more, so forty-nine. Is that true? I don't know.
I don't know. That's what I heard too, like, I heard fifty. Typically, I know we'll get more.
You're fine, it's good.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion, would you? Director Raha.
I will support.
Support by Director Randy Sauter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five forty-one.
I don't hear nothing.
No news is giving you.
I'm saying, I told you I couldn't do anything on Friday. You can, Lisa, please.